Meeting of the Planning Board, Town of West Warwick, Monday, March 5th, 6:00 PM. This is item one, approval of the minutes from the December 4th meeting. I will entertain a motion that we approve of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Alright, a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Alright, good. Item two, public hearing, neighborhood workshop, presenting the results of a study of the potential for a townwide stormwater management district. So, is there somebody here to present this?
Right behind you.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, okay.
My name is Jason Gold. I'm a civil engineer with ESS Group.
So, Jason, so we do have one individual. Why don't you move up to the front row? We won't bite you.
No problem, Mark.
And...
I'm not afraid of the bite.
He owns a mill down off of Brayton Avenue.
Brayton Street.
Straight, street. You're familiar with that area. The water runs from Main Street down through his property. It looks like, that might even be his parking lot. I think that might be your parking lot.
That could be my parking lot. I use a tree and a five-inch pump.
I think that is his parking lot.
Is it really?
Yes. That's the building right out, right by the entry, right?
Yeah.
The building's right here, right? No, that's, I think that's your parking lot.
I'm not on the list. I'll be using my picture, but I'm...
Well, you should be on it just...
Very dramatic picture.
You should be on it just by that.
Now, see all that water? I have to pump that. Otherwise, it goes in my basement. And then, all my transformers go underwater. And then, my sprinkler system goes down, and then West Warwick's finders come with the canteen truck.
There's a, um, there's a loading dock. I think it's right here, right?
Correct. All that water goes down the ramp. And then, when the water can't hold, the door can't hold the water back, the door caves in, and the whole, anybody who bought most in the spring is in my basement.
There you go.
What we have doing this?
Yeah, you go, you gather, sell it back.
What about your presentation?
Alright.
Jason, now that you have his picture right on the front, we should move on.
Glad you came. Yeah, but it doesn't pertain to me. I'm not on the list.
Well, no, it's, but it's a townwide, it's a townwide presentation.
Okay.
So, the purpose of the workshop, I'm gonna give you an overview of some of the work that we've been doing since about 2014. Also, to solicit public feedback. We got some...
Good stuff already?
And to discuss what the next steps are. There's three general areas that I'm gonna touch upon tonight. Stormwater problems, if you've got a head start on it already, some possible technical solutions, and some funding solutions. This is meant to be a public workshop, to solicit feedback. So, feel free to jump in if you have any questions. This doesn't need to be a formal presentation. If you have any questions, let me know. My answer will be there if I can. Stormwater challenges, obviously. You've got flooding issues. And that's tied really to aging infrastructure, inadequate infrastructure drainage. Needs work, honestly. There's also environmental concerns. High levels of bacteria, metals, and phosphorus in the heart of Brock. Branches of the Puytox River and Nysatunik. I'm trying to pronounce that one wrong. And then, of course, funding. Right? So, right now, my understanding is stormwater funding comes from the DPW budget, right? So, there's all these, all these stormwater issues, water quality, flooding, that just has to get funds where it can, where it can get them from. So, ESS worked with, with the town back in 2014, and was able to get a grant from New Wethick. It was $237,000. And so, that funded the work that I'm gonna talk about tonight. Also, public involvement, which is the reason for this meeting. Some BMP work, that's Best Management Practice Design work, concepts, and some actual design, and the development of a stormwater utility, we'll talk about. So, part of the assessment, we looked at six, conceptual BMPs from six areas. The original feasibility study was phase two. This is phase three. Looked at a broader area, and it was narrowed down to six. New Light Street, Phoenix Ave., Sunrise Ave., Maple Ave., Judy Terrace, Cochran Street, Pennsylvania Ave., and Jupiter Drive. If you want to, I can go through those, each of those neighborhoods. If not, I can, I can skip. Skip ahead.
Skip, yeah.
Alright. Skip those slides.
In case Phillip shows up and might have tons of questions.
The conceptual work that we worked on, I mean, it comes to like, over a million dollars worth of improvements, right?
That was for those six properties?
That was just for those six, that was just for those six areas. One estimate came up with $50 million.
That townwide?
For the whole town, the whole town. So, the question is, right, how do you pay for it? And that's where the stormwater utility comes in. A stormwater utility is like a water utility or a sewer utility, right? Sewer utility, you pay for what you use. What you use for the sewer, you pay for what you use for the water. But stormwater right now, it's just, it's not tied to how much stormwater you generate, right? So, it just comes out of the general, the general funds. Stormwater utility pays for stormwater improvements, just like a sewer utility or a water utility would. The benefits of it are it's a sustainable funding source, because it's a dedicated, it's a dedicated fund. It also attracts external investments, like the grant that's paying for this work, right? When funders see that the utility's been established, you have funds, you can provide matching funds, so you can attract additional money. The stormwater utility that's proposed, the fees provide $500,000 of annual stormwater operations, which is about what it costs now for stormwater maintenance, except for this would be in a dedicated fund. And also, $4 million in capital improvements, that would be borrowed. So, this would fund repaying that debt over the next 20 years. So, the way the structure works now, right, is stormwater is just paid for out of the general taxes. It's not related to how much stormwater is actually generated. The difference with a stormwater utility is the cost is based on how much stormwater you generate, which is tied to how much impervious area you have. So, it's calculated that the average single-to-five-family residential property has about 4,000 square feet of impervious area. And that was calculated to about $55 a year to pay into the stormwater utility for a residential property. Larger properties would pay based on the amount of impervious surface they have. So, a RBL or a commercial property with acres of impervious surface, obviously, would pay that much more. And it would be, it would be relative to this. So, if $4,000 a residence, you have a property that's got 8,000 square feet, you'd pay twice as much. So, this is how...
Who would assess that? Would it be a tax assessor duty?
Are the, um, there's like, there's a commission that's established by it, so that would be there as much as... So, for a single-family to five-family homes, that would be crazy to try to calculate for everybody. So, there's an average. And that's just for any residential property. And then, the larger properties, that's when you have to calculate And since the purpose of the stormwater utility is to fund the stormwater generated, there's also credit for the stormwater that's not generated. Alright, so it's up to 40% credit, is what's proposed. So, for new construction, you need to provide a certain volume of water quality treatment, and a certain volume of groundwater recharge. Where the credit works is if you provide above that volume, then you can get a credit for it. So, if you're required to provide 1,000 cubic feet of water quality volume, and you provide 2,000 cubic feet, then you get your full, well, you get 20% credit for that, and then another 20% if you do the same thing. So, that's encouraging new construction to go above and beyond help of the water, stormwater issues in the town. And then, also for retrofit. So, retrofit is a property that's already built. Right? So, there's nothing requiring anybody that already has a property built to provide water quality volume or groundwater recharge. So, this is an incentive. And it's rewarding those property owners by reducing their fee for reducing the amount of stormwater So, the next steps from this is to finalize the design and construction of one BMP that's included in this grant, this New Wethick grant. Finalize and adopt the stormwater utility ordinance, so that act it was provided, and I think it's gonna go on the website.
No, no, it has not gone.
Okay, but will it?
Will go.
It will. So, it'll be available on the website, and then you guys have it already. So, there's a draft ordinance, and there's a draft credit manual that just gets into the details of the 40% credit I was talking about. So, those need to be finalized, and then, you know, the town chooses to adopt them. And then, the next step, now that you have all this money from the stormwater utility, is to prioritize the additional stormwater improvements to start implementing those.
So, we have one candidate for prioritization sitting right here.
Alright, there you go.
I thought I said on the agenda, attendees get priority.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, probably just a simple. So, the new stormwater regs that DEM put out in the early days, so strict, when you look at those incentives, if you're building a new building with those new stormwater regs that DEM has, I mean, you must be eligible to some of that incentive.
It's above and beyond what DEM requires.
Wow.
I built a brand-new building on Route 2, and I had to shed my own water. I had to build a swale of it back in my building. I had $6,000 worth of plants that drink water.
Yeah.
You know, DEM regs are really, really tough.
Out of control.
Yeah.
So, the town requires one inch of runoff per acre per area.
This question was...
To provide two inches, and you get the full credit if you're right half inch.
Okay, alright.
I was having a problem with water running the streets, downspouts coming down. That's going right all the way into your stormwater drains.
They made a deal with the Alvin, they're gonna dump it into our things.
I'm just asking a question.
You're talking about the one on, on Maple Ave.?
Yeah. That was supposed to come right onto the street.
Yeah. And actually, it's a pretty ugly building.
Yeah, some people call it a small street now.
Because all you see is walls, yeah.
That stormwater not being captured on the concrete property itself?
Which stormwater?
The family dollar, the one on Maple Ave. or Main Street.
Yes, that's gonna be captured on site and retained.
Or is that somewhere?
Yeah, there's a, there's a subsurface, subsurface system that was approved as part of that project, you know, similar to what he's talking about, is, you know, DEM, they have a, what's called an underground injection control permit and system. So, those, those downspouts will be caught, collected.
That's what I thought.
Parking lot will be caught, collected, and percolated into the water table through, through the, underneath the parking lot.
They add the ash wall, where the water can go right through.
Yeah, pervious path.
It's great. If you don't live in the northeast.
You gotta maintain, yeah, you can't sand it.
You just gotta pop it in the freezer.
It freezes, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, good point.
Right, right. You know, they've got the wall, they let you put in all these beautiful islands, and it's part of the sewer order. Who's gonna plow around that?
Yeah.
You know, it's fine if you live in Florida.
Yeah.
But some of this stuff, this is common sense.
Alright, so, question. Who decides which one BMP is gonna be constructed?
Well, so the one BMP to be designed has already been narrowed down.
Which is?
So, that is for Pennsylvania Ave.
Okay.
What is that?
Pennsylvania Ave. Do you wanna go back and show us what Pennsylvania Ave. is?
I think it's by, um, is it from school, isn't it?
I don't know.
There it is.
Pennsylvania Ave., okay.
Alrights.
That's it.
So, this is an older design. The designs, this is a concept. The design's been advanced a little bit, but it's generally the same thing.
Okay.
So, there's a drainage channel here. It's hard to see in this picture. If it's clogged up, I understand that, that floods. So, part of it is to really to clean that channel out.
Okay.
And then, this is a, we're calling it a fire retention basin. It's been changed to a sand filter.
Okay.
The stormwater runoff, that initial inch, that water quality water design, gets diverted into there and infiltrates, kind of like Marcus Snaker, gets treated, and then it'll flow back in. So, that'll provide water quality treatment.
So, it comes in on that side, and then out and back to the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's about a 3,000 square foot, 4,000 square foot lot without the system being, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, that's one, and we gotta, we gotta do hundreds.
Lots.
Well, yeah, so, so what they, what they did, Joe, was they looked at particular areas, and the five were listed.
Yeah, yeah.
On that list for, for certain neighborhoods throughout the town. And what percent did you bring those to?
These are 50%.
That one's, yeah, so 50% design. So, they, they looked at the area, they determined the issues, and came up with a 50% design solution. And as part of the grant, there is money available to bring one to construction. And this was the one determined, I guess, between ESS, the prior individuals working on it, and the previous town manager, that they were going to proceed forward with this design. That's, that's correct, right, to say.
So, and this, we have funding for this one?
Well, there's, there's funding available under the grant.
Under the grant.
Right? So, the grant is, there's a mechanism for match there. So, all of this is going to be dependent upon the town budget. So, at this point, I think the town's expended, I think at the beginning, there was some mention about $233,000 or $230,000 worth of grant funds. I think the town's expended a little over $100,000 to advance the idea to the point where we're at. So, so where we're at is, the concept has been laid out as far as a stormwater utility district, which is townwide. And a lot of times, in communities, they're, they're localized. So, there might be one area that's having problems with stormwater, other areas aren't, and they just focus it on that. Because of the Town of West Warwick is eight square miles, number one, right? It's totally built out, number two, and it has tremendous amounts of impervious area, an older, undersized drainage system. It was determined by others that it would be appropriate to do a townwide district. Similar to the Sewer Authority, it's exactly like the Sewer Authority. So, if you're gonna build sewers in a town, you know, you pay your fee, you get your sewer. So, this is the same thing. So, they've basically gone through, done their study, written in ordinance, which Al and I have actually reviewed, may comment on, and that's in almost final format. And put together a tremendous amount of work, and a stormwater manual, which basically lays out, you know, how they arrived at these numbers. And I think ESS has actually gone in, I think I have it here, they have a list of almost every, if not every property in the town.
Yeah.
Broken down by impervious areas and things like that. It's quite substantial. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of documentation. And they've established this fee in the stormwater management manual, which will assess the fee to individual towns. Now, so this whole package then, we're looking for public input. And then, it's from this point, Planning Board, and this is just simply a mechanism to provide ESS with public input, to go back and adjust where they are based on the input. As you can see, there, there aren't a lot of...
Big public issues.
Which is not surprising.
No, not at all.
Then, it's going to go advanced to the town councils. Town council's prerogative whether they want to institute this or not.
Right, right.
So...
Now, would it be like a standalone entity, like, say, like the Sewer Authority?
No.
You know, I mean, would it be like...
So, the way it's structured, I believe, is to create...
From the town beyond, like, say, a ward?
Yeah, it's to, it's to create a stormwater management authority, I guess, and at least have an individual who is, I haven't read it in a while, doesn't have a director or something like that.
Right.
There was some discussion about making the DPW director the director. I think that, that went by the wayside, and there is some official that would be created as part of this that would manage...
A town official, some...
It would be, it would be, it would be a town official.
A PE or something like that?
Whatever the criteria would be, would be...
For a while, we...
It should be, it probably should be a PE.
Yeah, for a while, I thought the town's, you had to have a PE as a, as a director.
I think that is the record.
And then, and then the administration of it would be tacked on to the sewer. So, so the fee would be billed with sewer, right? So, that, that chunk of it is already placed. And so, that was part of what needed to be tracked.
So, what if you don't have a sewer, Josh?
Then, you wouldn't be on your sewer bill. But it's still the, but it's still the administrative.
I have a sewer.
You still have the same, uh, you got that organization in place, right? You'll start getting a bill.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be an annual assessment.
Yeah.
Yeah, annual inquiry, yeah.
Yeah, and for...
And the rate was locked for five years.
Yeah, and for, you know, residential property, they're doing a general average. And then, for commercial properties, it's based on impervious area. So, you know, the question would be, I don't know how much impervious area you have on your property. I just did a quick calculation. It looks like it's about a little more than a penny per thousand square feet. So, if you multiply that out, if you had, you know, an acre, it's that times that, and it could be $500 a year, that you'd be paying over and above your property tax to implement this stormwater management district, which then would have bonding authority and other types of authority to go out and build drainage projects, or upgrade and improve drainage in all areas of the town. So, it's a sewer. The sewer has bonding authority. So, it's just like that, except for stormwater. This has been looked at, I think, several communities throughout the state of Rhode Island, Massachusetts, all, all the Northeast.
Now, have any of, in Rhode Island, have anybody, has any of city or town implemented?
You know, I was, I was thinking about Anoyan. And I'm not sure, I want to say, or it's might.
Isn't Cranston doing something? I just meant with...
A lot of towns are looking.
I just meant with, um, Beck from their, their department, is their, their DPW Sewer. It's weird how they manage it, because they, Al Teller, I guess, is their guy, and they were talking about it.
So, there was a consortium a few years ago that they were trying to create between Cranston, Providence.
Oh, right.
Some of the urban communities to do a regional type of stormwater. They, they did also receive money from DEM or some entity to do their own study. I don't know what the status of that is. I know that they had invited Warwick to participate. Warwick declined.
I think it went Providence.
Yeah, I think it was North Providence, Johnson, something like that, yeah. So, this is something that's being looked at throughout the state. And it's as a result of EPA requirements that are passed down through DEM to local communities. And DEM is trying to implement these requirements, but the problem is, they're over and above what most communities are doing. And a lot of local communities just don't have the financial resources to comply.
Yeah, yeah.
And DEM has been regularly granting extensions, and time is, if it's not already beyond time, it's getting shorter and shorter for people, communities to try to comply.
For what it's worth, I think this is, I think this is sorely needed, and this seems like a reasonable plan, counting on the town council to approve it.
It'll be going before the town council for their consideration.
Yeah, so, and ultimately, they'll have to create this, yeah.
Ultimately, it's, it's under their authority to create this entity, and to implement this plan, whether they do or not. That's a decision that's theirs.
Looking at your property, we just keep getting more and more floods. We gotta figure out how to do something about this.
Well, you know, I can shed my own water. I don't have a problem with my water.
Yeah, it's, it's the water from other properties onto yours.
There is a hypothetical ladder on, from Kent County water to my property, and you dumped a cup of water in Kent County water's pocket lot, it becomes Steve Izzy water.
Yeah, got it, got it.
Because I asked the building inspector if he would allow me to put a wall on the edge of my property.
Yeah.
He said, "How high?" I said, "About five feet." He said, "Yeah, I could do that." I said, "Do you know what you allow me to do? Make a fish tank out of Walker Street."
Yeah, yeah.
Because that side of my property, there's a 16-inch cement pipe that comes in. As soon as it gets to my property line, it dumps right in.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah, I think that...
So, I mean, I can shed my own water, but I can't take the whole neighborhood.
I have a question, Al. Do we have to swear people in to testimony? This is not that kind of...
Have you ever done any research in how long, how long ago that pipe was, was there?
I think days out of war.
And I think that's, that's the problem.
So, your property was probably built, built after the fact?
Well, when I first bought the property and it started flooding, I bought pumps, and I started pumping it out into the street, into the street drains. Unbeknownst to me, that those drains just come back in. It's like sweeping the beach.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it was crazy. You know, I've been doing this for 13 years now. It's not just, it's not my first rodeo on this.
But Lee, your grants that you manage, they don't help, right?
We actually did a study on that, and part of his problem is state drainage problem.
So, I had a meeting with Director Lewis at the State House. And he said, "Mr. Izzy", as soon as he walked in the office, he said to me, "Mr. Izzy, are you aware of how much flooding is being done in this country?" I said, "With all due respect to Director Lewis, I don't care about 200,000, Brayton Street."
There you go, there you go.
He walked out of the room. He got up and walked out. So, I mean, I don't care about the rest of the country. You know, I'm, I'm just, I'm there for myself. At the end of the day, I don't worry about who's on my side with a lock. I lock my house up.
Okay, so I think we understand your concerns, okay? Do you want to add something?
No.
No, we're good.
The town manager, Mr. Zabinski.
But he can still add something.
He may.
I feel for these people that have single-family homes that are eroding their foundations. You know, I, I wait my turn, and I have been. And they knows. I don't nick any ways. I just deal with what I have to deal with, and just wait for my turn. And the town has helped me on my taxes, because I have to deal with this. And so, it's a two-way street. They, they work with me, so. Well, that's it.
Anybody else want to offer additional comment before we close this hearing? I think, you know, we want to thank Jason?
Well, I've got about a gallon of water in my garage.
Yeah, I know.
What if I can follow up on the tax incentive?
Well, actually, I, see, I live on the hill, away from the hill, so I don't have this problem, but I, but I have to drive through puddles everywhere, so.
I gotta tell you, some residents, it's weird, the water, maybe you can explain that, is, we might not have a drainage problem, but the hydraulics of the water to the ground sometimes comes up to the, the foundation, to the floor. It's...
If we driving through the neighborhood during heavy rains, I found out that a lot of the cars driving down Main Street splash the water over the curb, and that becomes my water. So, I try to get the state involved, because it's their water.
Yeah, right, right.
And they don't want to hear it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, because it's, I mean, I'm out there during these storms, you know? And I see it. So, you know, you try to get them to eat a portion of it.
Alright, so, well, thank you. Thank you for coming. And we'll, I think we'll, we can close this public hearing at this point. We've got, we've got input. Thank you, Mark. Item three on the agenda is public comment. I have a public comment. I want to know why we have a flag of Robe de Peix in our council chamber. Why don't we have a flag of Fornelli? Because Robe de Peix is the village where the Portuguese immigrants came from.
Because I want Scopoli, not Fornelli.
Oh, you didn't, you weren't from Fornelli?
No, Scopoli.
Ah, you might be Fornelli, you're from Fornelli. Yeah, we want a flag for Fornelli.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
You know, I...
How much is a flag venue for?
It's been a while. I noticed in a while, but it's Robe de Peix. This is the town, it's Fish's Tail, is what it means, in Portuguese. That's it.
I wonder if that used to be a flag.
Yeah, you love that Robe, Robe de Peix.
It used to be the town flag?
I don't know. I don't know. So, so, sitting here facing that direction, I had a look at it the whole time, and I'm thinking, why don't we have a flag from, from Fornelli, or...
That's Roetner Road, Fornelli and Scopoli.
Scopoli, right. Scopoli's right nearby, right?
It's across the Roetner.
Across the Roetner on the other, on the other hill. Yeah. So, have you been?
We don't even have the town flag.
Did you see?
It used to be a town flag.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say.
Joe, Joe, did you see that the sign? It says the sister, sister city is Warwick.
From Fornelli?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we used to be Warwick.
Scopoli, the other little town, has the largest world bagpipe festival.
Wow.
And Scopoli, it's a league.
We just said, "A ball to close the public hearing."
Yes, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Any comment? Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, second motion to... Alright, second motion to adjourn.
I'll move that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're right, you're growing up, I could never, you know, always go, Scopoli, Fornelli, Scopoli.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I never could figure out why, no, when I went to Scopoli, and you get...
To the top of the mountain, can you see, look across, see Fornelli on the other?
And then all of a sudden, you realize...